Ladies and gentlemen, can we stand for a pledge, please? Pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands on the issue under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Before we start deviating, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Years. This is 2025, we're off to a start, so. Can I have Bob roll call? We're pretty sparse up here in the board tonight, so.
Teresa Santiago.
Craig Laverne.
And Bob, I think you're ready. To the right of us, standing at that part. This is close eighteen. Mr. Plasky, our attorney, county attorney. And Mr. Fusco, Fusco, you're here. All right, first up on our agenda tonight is the X lot line change, it's a pre-app. Yeah, just give the name for the record, please.
James Dillon Jr., Lance O'Vere. What we have is, the X's estate has two lots, which actually are very long, that's why it's broken up in this way. We have two lots here, one here and one below, this one right here. And what we'd like to do is subdivide this longer piece with Academy Avenue here, and possibly if we need to do a dedic road dedication, and keep this lot whole, what was, the issue here on the bottom lot is this lot overlapped us quite a bit, almost over a hundred feet.
When they overlap?
The properties overlap, each other.
Was there a separate deed or deed show that one hundred foot overlapped?
Yeah, we surveyed these in ninety-one, and it was a big error, and somebody like created this extra lot that actually overlapped this piece. He wound up buying the property, so he owns it now.
Okay.
Basically, wanted to straighten this out for his estate and cut this into maybe three lots. It was two, we just really were just taking this out. And his son lives over here in a corner lot there, and I think he's going to retain the rest of that property, so.
Mr. Dillon, just give me a favor, my eyes will...
I'm sorry, sir.
No, that's quite right, it's more important that you bring it over to our town attorney and our engineer to get a good look at what you have.
And I got little copies of what the layout.
Okay, well, yeah.
It's a little hard because you can't fit everything on the one. This is like a...
All right, we'll just follow along with you. You have another one?
Yeah, I've got another.
And this little part up here, that's Wilbur's son's?
Yes, yeah. We just recently, last year, we did a lot line change, we took some property off this big piece. And we made this with a house and made this one big piece. These are big here, they're wood, they're all property. Like I said, his son's gonna, lives here, he's gonna retain this piece and then we're gonna have these have these separate these say.
Where are these two in relation to that one?
Yep. I have a, look at the vicinity map. And we have these little copies, I could... Is this here and here? This is the match line here.
Oh, so they butter up end to end? Oh, I see, lot two, lot three.
See the match line? Those maps there help a little bit. You can see, this was a survey we did originally in the same property, and you can see the big overlap there, we have, it's more highlighted. That was in ninety-two, I believe we did that.
But now it's all one?
Yes.
Or is there two separate deeds?
No, no, we're gonna, that's what we wanted, well, no, they overlapped, you bought them both, it's never been fixed, that's why we're gonna fix that.
That's your lot line change?
This lot line change. We want to clean this up.
So is there actually subdivision or just lot?
Sort of both, because we're gonna split this longer piece with Academy Avenue, because you don't have a natural subdivision law. I don't believe in this now.
You're correct.
It's a subdivision.
Right, in line with the...
You're gonna break down this centralized part of it, it'll be a lot line change. I'm not sure if the town requires, you know, under a rogetic issue for that?
We generally have the twenty-five foot, you just have to...
Now, if you notice, and maybe you want to read the note that they put on this. We have all these labeled for non-residential use. It's C note five. Because we just want to see what we have to do for, when we submit for subdivisions.
Are they gonna be used for residential use after the subdivision?
Right now, not, we don't plan on it, but we don't know.
They want to be able to sell them as residential.
Correct.
So, I mean, they're big enough, there shouldn't be no reason that you couldn't, as long as you can make the setback requirements? And you have to, right, and you have to show that they perk.
Is that what the requirement is, you have to show the perk?
The perk, just the perk.
Just the perk, no designs?
No deed, no design, just perk.
You'll end up, you'll have, you'll have to, ultimately, you're gonna have to do it as part of that process.
Do a public hearing.
Well, because, I mean, I understand what you're saying about it being a lot line change, but it's not.
Well, it's a subdivision, no, I'm saying subdivision too, but because of...
Yeah, the lot line is just because of the texture of the overlap, right? So that's fine. Yes, they need a public hearing, and ultimately, basically, you'll have to provide me with the three proposed deeds, and that would be a condition of, you know, final approval.
Yeah, the final survey of the lot.
So the town, you witness, you witness the perk of this?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly appears to make sense, and I can't think of a reason that you wouldn't be able to find a place where they perk it.
Yeah, no, I don't...
Be able to do the setbacks and all that, I think you'd be okay.
That'd be true.
So, you know, this was a, this was an easement that was added on, and this was last year when we did this, this is gonna be eliminated, it was, our daughters wanted access through there before this, it's gonna be eliminated, there's no need for it.
Oh, because now they have access to our...
They have it up here anyway, but they had some sheds down here, so we're gonna be eliminating that.
Yeah, if there's something on the ground, you have to show.
This was an old scrapyard, I guess, years ago. Looks good.
I guess the next move is just to get all of our secretary, Amanda, fill out a full application for...
Yes.
Full application and the escrows.
Got two escrows?
Probably have an escrow sheet there.
Yes, they do.
Go fill the numbers in, you guys. Yeah, that's, when he had, just had that, this was broken up, this was just separated, but that line, it was the same one.
It'll be thirty-five tomorrow.
Once he, he's gonna subdivide this piece as well, so he'll have to...
That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, any questions for the board? All right, well, I think you know what you gotta do is that...
That one's gotta sign it, and then he's gonna put it back to me.
You sign it and put it back to me. Do I sign it?
Yeah.
Sign it and give it back to him.
Either way. I'm gonna sign it, I'm leaving.
All right, so number two on our agenda is the Quarry Management, Route Six, we have a pre-app. Mr. Fuller, sir?
Yes, how are you?
I'm doing good. I'm gonna have to collapse, this is gonna get further away.
Well, I think you probably...
Well, I'm reading that. I've been awkward now.
All right, just to kind of bring the board up to speed of why we're here. So I had previously represented Quarry Management for the original site plan approval that this board granted back prior to COVID-2019 timeframe. It was for the development of their facility that's been in operation since. During, in that, there's two parcels on the existing Route Six that they occupy. It involved quite a bit of major earth movement and bringing in a fill in order to establish areas that we were looking to expand, what I'll call the contractor's yard, which was defined, you know, in all the detailing in the site plan at that time, including stormwater pollution prevention plan, ponds, retaining walls and that. So the project obviously has been under construction for five years now, and it's undergone a number of changes. They brought in a significant amount of fill, which is well-known within the community that they did that. Part of that was by design in order to achieve what we had displayed in the approved site plan from 2019. And then, you know, pile got pretty large, and obviously, there had been a number of complaints filed with the town. The town board's been involved, I know Mr. Fusco, Mr. Plasky are aware of the situation there. Also, complaints have been made to the DEC, and the applicant and the property owner has had to address a number of concerns with the DEC, who's made multiple visits to the property. With that said, through much of last year, they became twice, had to come into compliance with the DEC, and currently, the property sits in compliance with the DEC. So that they've established, they've stabilized what they have currently actively worked on, and then we're looking to make amendments to that site plan from 2019. In order to do that, there's a couple other things I'll share about what's transpired. There were a couple of residential properties behind it, which they have acquired over time, and those are these properties here. There's three properties involved. Quarry Management has purchased them and bought them out from the original owner. So, as part of an amended site plan, we're going to propose two things. One is, this is a, it's in the set that you have, is what I'm calling existing conditions as of now, give or take, because we had the property flown by drone in order to establish newer current topography of the property. So what you see in this existing conditions plans is pretty accurate to current conditions of the property. And so what I've outlined there is also the three properties to the rear that the owner has purchased. They have frontage on Limekill. So as we pursue an amended site plan, due to some changes that they would like to make, we'd like to pursue a lot line change where we would add some of those, the lands of those lots into the Quarry Management property and do a complete consolidation of their lands. And so we would do a full consolidation after we do a lot line change to acquire some of the acreage from those residential lots. And then second to that, and we've spoken with representatives of the town board, we would request a zone change to extend the zone boundary between the IB and the residential, extend it to the property line, so that after the lot line change, the entirety of the acreage would be within one zone. So it would be a, just one zone which would be compliant with that. And then from there, we would pursue an amendment of a site plan. Generally speaking, we're not changing anything about the operation of what they established or represented in 2019, but it's more to do with the grading that's necessary to finalize and stabilize what they've done, which was a significant amount of fill that was brought into the, into the property. So with that, I'll stop there and answer any questions that you have about what we're looking to do with this.
Is there gonna be access, once that property lines are changed and solidated, is there gonna be any access to the lower pieces off the Limekill Road for part of the business?
No, no. So they will be residential lots. So when we request to extend the zone change through the lot line change, they will remain residential lots along Limekill, yes, yep.
So you wouldn't be looking to change their zoning?
Correct, so those...
Probably the stuff on the other side.
We're gonna keep this for their purposes and this for residential.
John, even on the, we're a bit familiar with the big retaining wall they had to put in the back and whatnot.
I assume you're gonna change that, you've got more land.
Yes, exactly.
The intention is to move that, possibly move the retaining wall back and make...
Correct. Yeah, that's exactly the intention, yes, is to get more acreage in order to facilitate the construction of that slope that's necessary to finish off, yeah.
And we're thinking of retaining while I'm not saying something that's gonna be eighty foot tall.
No, no. It'll be, everything will be a gradual, but yes, it's very, it was always tight constraint. Also address other measures such as ENS, stormwater, and ultimately, stability of the slope.
Let me ask more questions, one question, referring back to the existing conditions, when you look at the Quarry Management site, the buildings, there's a piece of property, the existing conditions for the right kind of a high-shaped piece of property?
Does here you mean, or?
Uh, no, to the right, yes, correct.
Yeah.
Was that, I don't have my current site plan now, was that always part of the site plan?
Yes, that was, yeah, yeah, so.
And they say line through it now, but do we approve to, is that a separate lot now?
It's currently a separate lot, and part of the original site plan approval noted that they were two lots. So it was, you know, one operation straddle and two lots.
I'm trying to think back five years, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you're right, you're right, but that's a great question. The, there was always two lots, and as it stands today, there are two lots, but it was one site planned for two lots. But when we go to make this lot line change, we would consolidate it all into one giant parcel. Yeah, yeah.
So you go from having, looks like five lots, to three?
Uh, well, there'd be, yes, three, correct, yep. So we would, we would have the larger parcel consolidated for Quarry Management, this will remain a residential lot, which currently has a house on it and will stay there, and then this will become a residential buildable lot.
The large parcel, what zone do you wish for that to be in?
Well, that's the, it's currently the IB zone, and so, as I suggested, as we do the lot line change, we would request the town board through law to extend the zone boundary to the lot line.
Town board won't have to do anything?
The new lot line.
If the lot line change is approved, it's automatic?
Okay, I didn't know the process, that's why we're here, so. Yeah, so we would consolidate it and, you know, okay, that's great, that's perfect.
Particularly since the other two will remain HMU or RR or whatever they are?
Yeah, they'll remain in the residential zone that they are, yeah.
I mean, I'll do a little research, but I don't think any of them are required.
So one of them currently is residential, and it's gonna remain residential, so there's a house there, it's occupied, and it will remain occupied. They may eventually sell it off, I don't know if there's a desire to do that right now, but that is a residential change, and this will remain a residential lot.
Right, so let me ask you, oh, but Quarry Management does own that property?
Well, they own everything currently, yes, yeah, and we're preserving, we're preserving the residential aspect of it.
Because if there was an owner on that property, they would have to come in with the lot line change, but Quarry Management owns it, then they can do it.
Correct, correct, well, everything we're proposing is under ownership by Quarry Management. They bought out those residential lots, and so, but they will remain, and then at some point, they'll have, they could sell them, you know, I don't, you know, obviously, we gotta go through all this, and then, you know, we'll go from there.
Good idea, what you want to do. Any questions from the board? Do you have any further questions?
We'll not have to do a two thirty-nine review again?
Yeah.
And ultimately, you'll have to submit deeds for approval.
Yes, well, I mean, we're gonna do all that, we'll do the consolidation, and then and then we'll pursue a complete amended site plan.
Do we do a short form or long form, BAS on that?
It's a big enough property to be long. They already did one, so it's not gonna be that difficult.
Yeah.
Add to it.
So I mean, I think ultimately, it'll be two simultaneous applications, one for the lot consolidation, lot line change and consolidation. That'll be one application, and the second one will be an amended site plan for everything that is gonna change from the original site plan approval, so.
Oh, yeah, two thirty-nine for that?
Oh, yeah, let's do it, we've been encouraged to move forward, so.
Okay.
So.
Well, we appreciate it, John.
Yeah.
I don't have to ask you if you know what you gotta do, so.
It's a long time ago.
Number three on the agenda is Lynx at River Bend, everything drawn, a pre-app?
Yeah, this is mine too.
Oh.
So the current owner I met with just before the holidays of the Lynx, the, one thing I'm here specifically to discuss tonight is pre-app, and then I'll just allude to the other one. So they're looking to do a small subdivision to break off an acre of land to create a residential lot by what I'll call Hole Five, which is down close to the river. Obviously, this is a survey which was done by Conroy Close New Wallet, they've got history with it. They've recently surveyed this area in order to get the topography enough and things necessary. Oh, I gotta hand out maps, I'm sorry.
You gotta have every...
I'll go, come on, take a look.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, so they, as I said, the survey area has history with the property, they recently surveyed this corner in order to get updated information, and specifically, topography in order to do a subdivision, but they want to create a single residential lot. The owner actually wants to build his own house there, which is close to what we call Lot, or Hole Number Five, if you know the golf course at all. I did check, it's not in the flood wag nor flood zone AE, it's in what we call the X, which is the five-hundred-year flood, there's no design considerations for five-hundred-year flood. Obviously, the soils along that area are incredibly good, but what he's looking to do is create a single residential lot to put a dwelling there, which he's going to occupy himself, so.
On which end of Hole Number Five will it be? At the top of the hill by the...
Top of the hill, yeah.
Or at the base of the, by the farm field where the tee boxes are?
Right here at the, you see at the end where Carpenter Road and Leona Drive come together? That would be the entrance to the residential lot.
That'd be the greens side.
Yeah. Yeah, the greens is right, right behind it, yeah. So it would be a residential lot with frontage on Leona Drive.
What's that, okay, what's the, what's the lot size, John?
It'll be one, a minimum one acre, which is what this only requires, yeah.
Any questions from the board on it?
No.
It's pretty cut and dry, but gee, yes, anything, do you have any questions on it?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, I mean, you need, you need a better map.
Well, I need a larger map, yeah, obviously, but as I said, they just wrapped up the survey late this year, sent it to me, I've been in communication with the owner, he'd like to pursue that this year and eventually build the house, so. But it's simply creating a lot, one acre out of the giant parcel of the Lynx, you know, in order to accomplish that. Yeah, and we, you know, we will meet the minimum lot area as well as other development standards, so it should be pretty straightforward.
Should be a good perk, it's all the same.
Oh, the perk's really good. Getting a house shouldn't be, you know, yeah, it shouldn't be an issue. I don't know about golf balls, though.
If I were to put a cage on it, I'd have to...
Might need some netting or...
All right, I think that's...
Who does? I actually have the next two, but...
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
We'll search through our paperwork there, but you made that easy.
This one, I actually, you should have maps, we submitted.
Yes.
Yeah.
Number four is Rex LLC, lot forty-two ninety-seven, sub storage?
Yes, so we have already done a pre-app on this back in October, with the desire for the owner of the property to develop this existing parcel on ninety-seven as with storage units. And so, one of the concerns, you know, we, I think at the time, the board felt that the application looked good, you know, we answered a bunch of questions about security and all that, but one of the concerns was the access. So at the time, this property, you know, obviously, was subdivided a number of years ago, and the state restricted, state meaning DOT, because it's a DOT highway, restricted access for any entrance off of that. And so, in recorded maps, the only access to the property other than frontage on town roads, was it was granted an access easement through the Children's Safe State parcel, which was a twenty-foot wide access easement that brought it out to the throat of Corso Road. So I met with Susan Muser at Children's Safe State, and we discussed a lot of her concerns, and also met with the highway superintendent. And one of the biggest concern for using that, Ms. Muser has certainly her own concerns because of her operation of the Children's Safe State there, about having commercial traffic, you know, come across that drive right in front of her building. And obviously, from a highway perspective, exiting a driveway right there at the throat of Corso Road and ninety-seven is not, you know, it has potential for conflict, you know, traffic conflict. So we discussed a new scenario, and just a reminder that when these properties were developed and access was granted for this parcel through the Children's Safe State property, so, and Ms. Muser understands that. So what we, we've talked about as an alternative, and I've also discussed this with the highway superintendent, is to, instead of putting a driveway across the front of ninety-seven, right through the front of her property, is that we would take a driveway above her property in an existing paved area that she utilizes and send an access behind her property along the slopes and into the development. And so that, we wanted to bring that, we've made a formal application now, and obviously, we've got more engineering to do on the development of plans, but I wanted to bring that in so that the board understands how we're proceeding with this, because it is different from what I presented in the pre-app. So with that, I'll answer your questions.
So your access is gonna go through the other property?
Yeah, so, right now, and I'm sorry with the microphone. She has access right here. This is the easement. She would give us, she would give us an additional easement in lieu of this, the access here. But a majority of this is actually town. It's actually town property. There's only a portion of it that we would actually have to traverse her property in order to create this drive to go back in.
When you say "town," is it a town road?
Well, yeah, Corso Road is a town road.
You just said "town prop," you said "town property."
Well, it's town right-of-way. So, what's odd about this scenario, you have your typical 50-foot right-of-ways along most highways and roads, right? And I, again, I don't know the history without doing the research. The property here goes along here, so, you know, where a typical 50-foot right-of-way would be centered on the road, it, for whatever reason, it was extended down the slope, and so it's much wider in this location. So, this is town right-of-way, I'll call it. So, it's not a, it's not a separate property. It's just right-of-way. But it's not a perfect 50-foot right-of-way. It's this large, you know, area. Can I make sense?
Probably need a sign-off from her, since you're traversing her property somewhat. And you'll need a sign-off from the Town Highway Superintendent and perhaps the Town Board as well.
Yeah.
I'll know better when I get a better idea of what it is you're doing.
Yeah, understood. But I wanna be clear that it's not an actual separate property that's owned by the town. It's actually right-of-way. And if you go to the tax maps, if you go to all deeds, I mean, that's what it is. You know, it's just not your typical, you know, 30-feet or 50-foot right-of-way. It's just this expanded area that is, that's town right-of-way.
Now, does the town become a possession of that right-of-way? Is that?
I mean, that, this goes way back.
Oh, way back.
It was a leftover piece, something like that, you know?
Okay.
A leftover piece.
Well, I mean, if it's a, if it's a town of, if it's a town right-of-way, essentially for purposes of a road, then I don't think it'll be a problem, because we'll just use yours.
Yeah.
I just, I wanna remind the board that I did disclose that my office has done, or my former office has done work for the applicant who, at least, it appears, has used at least three different names during the course of his application. Thanks, John.
Well, yeah, the.
Last time it was Rex LLC, or this time it's Rex LLC. But the other application was Delacor.
Yeah, which is it?
Yeah, that's what I have, Delacor.
Which one is it, you know?
You have to ask the guy over there.
John, which one is it? Is it the Delacor or is it Rex LLC?
Well, Rex was his historic ownership name, but I believe they're putting it under the Delacor as the applicant. So, I mean, the name of the site plan can be whatever we wanna call it.
I just wanna have one file that I can follow.
Yeah, I know. Well, go by, go by SBL, I mean, and then, no, I mean, it, it was under Rex, but then they wanna put the application under Delacor, so the applicant is actually Delacor. The applicant's actually.
I've made a note on the agenda, so then I'll change the name of the file.
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, that's the applicant. I mean, the name of the project, we can call it whatever, Route 97 Storage, or, you know.
Yeah, let's not do that.
Yeah, I mean, but, I mean, we'll come up with a name, but I, but Delacor is the applicant, yes.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Yep. How many storage units are going in?
I don't have that number today. What I can tell you, when I did the pre-app, we had based the footprints of the building that we could fit within the site, you know, based on history that I have. You know, we've done a number of, I've done about a half a dozen storage units now. So, these building footprints are very consistent with what the industry develops. You know, 20 feet wide, 30 feet lot wide, 300 feet long, that's what it is. As far as the total quantity, I'll defer to when I actually submit the full company of engineering plan, but I would say probably 200, you know, roughly. Good question, though.
So, you're gonna mail them?
I have some, I believe we sent it to John, although.
Yeah.
It's, you know, the concept plan looks okay to me. And he explained the public right-of-way, so I'm okay with that. Need a ship-o sign-off based on the, you know, EAF DEC mapper. He has to give us some information about small eagles and, you know, whatever, from an environmental guy. And lighting, landscape plans, and at some point, maybe a survey of this plan.
Yeah.
That's it.
You have a copy? You have a copy of this?
Yeah, he, they emailed it to me earlier. Okay. But I, I think that's the important obstacle is, is the access. And Ms. Musser is, has agreed with this and is willing to give us the additional easement to use this route. And the Highway Super thinks it's good as well. So, and it's much safer for vehicles entering and exiting the property that way. So.
All right, sounds good.
So, we'll proceed. All right.
Is your, you guys do escrows on this already, or?
No, we already did them.
Okay.
Okay, um, should I present?
Yeah, yeah, all right. Number five, Village Dairy Farm, Main Street, two-lot subdivision?
Okay, so, this is, the Melzian family's here, and obviously, Mr. Cole is not here, but he's a spouse involved with this. So, we had previously come in in October and presented a sketch plan as a pre-app under the premise of they wanna build their residential dwelling on this property. And I, you know, I went through the history. It's a very irregularly shaped parcel with a lot of acreage, but very little frontage.
Limited access.
Very, yeah, limited. So, and I think there was some question about the best way to proceed. The board had advised me to meet with Mr. Plotsky, which I did. And we came to the determination that the best way to approach this parcel and what they wanna accomplish with the property is to do a subdivision. But that subdivision will require variances, because neither parcel will meet the minimum requirements by zoning for residential lots in this area. Acreage, not a problem. Many of the setbacks and other things, but due to the frontage primarily, which is probably the largest obstacle, and some setbacks to the existing building on Main Street there, we are gonna need variances. So, we made application to the zoning board in, in November. The board has scheduled a public hearing for January, which is actually next week, next Thursday. And so, we'll have a public hearing, and, you know, if the variances are granted, then obviously, the conditions will be added to the subdivision, and then we will proceed with you under that. But what we wanted to do is to actually submit the two-lot subdivision, to run them simultaneously and concurrently. That way, we can get reviews underway, schedule joint soil testing and things of that nature in order to move the application along under the hope and premise that we achieve the variances necessary to record the subdivision. So, that's kinda where we're at, and I just wanted to get before you tonight. I did get a review letter from Mr. Fusco's office, and, you know, it's pretty straightforward. I think the big thing I need to do with them is to schedule soil testing as soon as it warms up a little bit. But soils are very good there as well.
Well, Dela, why don't you just run through your comments there on that?
Yeah, sure. Well, he mentioned some of them, but, you know, perch test, witnessed by the village engineer. A di test on the existing system, only because, because, yeah, the well, the well going in there.
Yeah.
Sign-off from ship-o. You got the eagles again, certified survey. And the well for the existing facility is on the other parcel, so you're gonna need some kind of easement or agreement.
So, we'll run an easement with it, but we have, I have the engineer and showed that should the property need a well in the future, it has room to drill a well and have separation from other septic.
That's fine. If you're gonna use that well, you just need an easement to it.
Yeah.
So, I'll find you that. Meet and balance for the right-of-way taking, and then ZVA.
You're not sure we'll see backup ZVA?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna proceed, and as we'll know, as soon as we, again, under the hope and premise that we get the variances, we'll be right back here next month to move along. Okay? All right, very good. Thank you.
Did escrows have been sent already on this?
Yes, they have. And that's what some of my travelers lost, so.
I had to go to the house to fix it.
They have the R's, I just felt on their trail. I'll, I'll, I'll fix that. Thank you. I have one more, John.
John might do it. All right, so moving on, number six is the Lynn Daly Hill Road, ground-mounted solar. How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Good, good, good. Name for the record, please?
Ka Jing Lian. We started at 211 Gallic Hill Road.
You've provided us with a map. I suppose I can see this is a solar panel shed. Explain us which one to do here.
Okay. I proposed just a storage shed sized 60 feet by 24 feet and six small solar panels mounted on the ground. The footprint of the solar is probably like seven feet by eight feet total.
It's raised.
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 Yeah.
You don't have any, you know, at this point, doesn't matter, I guess.
Well, I just make sure it's mounted on the ground. It's firm, and the road away by the wind. As only as six.
There's a lot next to you, to the right, to the right of your property. Is there a dwelling on that now? A house?
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a dwelling there. That's house there. So far enough from the property line.
Should that be shown on a site plan, a plan of proximity of the existing houses on the neighboring lots?
Yeah, he's gonna have an update, he's gonna have to submit an updated survey with setback distances so we can see what the distance is between the proposed structures, the shed and the solar facility and the property line?
Yeah, I can tell you right now, the setback from the shed is 32 feet.
So, say it again?
32 feet from the property line.
That is noted on the plan, 32, but the corner.
Yeah, I can see the 32 feet from the one side yard.
Yeah, the other side, like 15 feet, 20 feet?
Okay, well, okay. So, the zoning code requires certain setbacks. And we need a surveyor to tell us what the distance is between where you're gonna put the solar facility, just like we do with the proposed shed. It shows 32 feet from the side yard. We need that same information, but we need it for the solar facility.
All right, so how many feet do you want me to put there? I can, you know, adjust it.
Um.
35, fuck, yeah.
I don't even, what? Is it in the RR zone?
Yeah.
No, it's in the RS, so.
Yeah, IS, yeah.
I don't know the setbacks.
Well, that's something engineers should research and do.
Yeah, I would think it's gonna be somewhere 35 or less.
Yeah.
I don't know what the less is. If you put it at 35 feet, I'm confident you'd have the proper setback, but I don't. Frankly, you can check with whoever's gonna do your survey. Have them look at the town zone and go for RS, and they'll know exactly what that number needs to be.
Why do you call that engineer here?
My phone card, I was, but he didn't need me to.
Okay, well, who's gonna do your survey?
Well, uh, well, I just need to know.
No, this, this, this survey doesn't cut it. I mean, at least the copy that we don't have. This needs to be updated. If you did this, and you're licensed to do it, that's fine, but you need to show us the setbacks.
Okay.
You need to have a bulk table that says, this is what's required, the number of acres, the front yard, the rear yard, the side yard, what's required, what you're providing. Just show us that it all conforms. If it all conforms, you're likely good to go.
Okay, I think.
I think because there's a ground-mounted solar, we've been requiring a public hearing for that, so we would probably require a public hearing only because of the ground-mounted solar.
Good.
I can make it 20 feet. Is that sufficient?
Sorry?
20 feet.
If 20 feet is what the zoning permits, then make it 20 feet.
Okay.
If you're an engineer, look at the book.
Okay, I saw the, you saw the engineer here and.
No, I understand. I don't have, I don't have my book with me, so I can't answer your question.
All right, so I can try to find out.
But you're gonna need an updated survey with a bulk table.
Well, the survey is, this is the survey map.
You're gonna need the bulk table on it. Bulk table.
You need the bulk table, and you need the surveyor to tell us what the distance is between the solar and that property line, that, that other side yard. If you look at your own, if you look at the survey map that you submitted, if you look at the house, it has 40.6 feet and 44.4 feet.
Yeah.
Those are the side yard setbacks.
Yeah.
You need that same calculation with the accurate number for the solar facility that you're proposing.
Okay.
I got a question. Is there any storage batteries for the solar?
Well, it's a portable plug-and-play type battery.
What does that mean? We have no battery storage line now, so.
Right now, we do not have a battery storage line.
So, you really can't use that solar system, plug-and-play or whatever. It doesn't make a difference. You can't use the solar array for battery storage.
Well, it's a like RB-type battery, you know? I just wanna make sure, you know, the panels secure, not a wrong way.
Well, that's kinda, that's kinda town law, so I'll have to refer that to our town.
The town law, we currently do not permit solar battery storage in a town of Deer Park. Once that ordinance is adopted, and if you comply with it, then you can have battery storage. Until there's a law that says you can do it, you can't do it. That's how Deer Park zoning works. It's clear in the book. That, that one I know without having to look at it.
So, cannot have a plug-and-play battery for my RB?
Say it again?
For my RB.
You can have a battery.
Yeah.
You can't have it, you can't have it charging from your solar panels. Your solar panels have to go to the grid. Then you have to get your electricity from one or on net or whoever.
You know, I mean, the RB has a battery. The battery should have a panel to charge the battery. So, when I'm not going away and stay at home, so I charge it at home.
Town of Deer Park zoning does not currently permit solar battery generation or storage. Okay? So, if it's a solar battery.
It's a handheld in the battery. I don't know, so.
The law doesn't currently provide for solar battery storage. It just doesn't provide for it. Town of Deer Park law says if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. So, you either have to wait to do it until we view the solar battery law, which should be probably within the next 90 days, or don't do it. Or have your solar panels. Or have your solar panels, submit your energy to the grid, charge your battery through the grid, and then nobody cares, because everything's lawful, it's legal, as long as you meet the setback requirements.
Okay, it's just a such small, you know, voltage in the battery, and also small panels. So how can, can I make the panel removable, like, you know, just hang it on the ground and then do the charging? You, you know, not fixed, removable, maybe, you know, there's a stand, okay? Support it, then, at night, I-
First of all, I don't know if that's technologically possible, second of all, I'm confident that it's not the Town of Deer Park zoning, and therefore it would be prohibited. If you want to put it on your shed and attach your RV to the shed, I think you're good to go. Otherwise, you have to come back with a site plan and show us where that solar panel-
So I can put on my shed? Is that right? On the roof, yeah. Okay, I'll put it on the shed.
Yeah, but you can't charge the battery with it.
So why use that for? So something's wrong here, I don't know.
You need to read the Town of Deer Park zoning, sir, that's the answer to your questions, all your questions.
Okay, my question that, so, the people, the residents in this town cannot use a portable battery, is that right?
People in this town cannot legally charge batteries from a solar facility.
So I can charge it from the grid?
Yes.
Okay, so I still store it in my house, right?
You're not-
Yeah, I just try to, you know, understand, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can explain it, because I've said it four different ways, and apparently you're not understanding.
Yeah, I don't understand it.
Okay, can't charge, you can't have your charge go from your solar batteries, from your solar panels, directly into a battery storage. Is that clear enough?
Okay, so I can charge-
If you have a rechargeable battery that you plug into your house-
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
And how you charge, how you get the electric from your solar panel into the house has to be through the grid, so that's fine. But you have to come back and show us where the grid's going to go, so that we know that it has the proper setback, and there has to be a public hearing to find out if any of your neighbors object.
Do we need a net, a net meeting agreement, and then even hooking to the grid with the solar panel?
Say that again?
Do we need a net meeting agreement?
Not, not for a ground mount solar residential, which this would be considered.
Okay, so I can drop the solar panels, just promote the storage shed.
What do you want to do, just the shed, no solar panels?
No.
No what?
Just the storage shed.
Just the storage, you just want to do that?
Yeah.
You just got to the building department for that.
The storage shed, I think they can just go to the building department.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so?
The other thing, just to get, curious, what is the, on the left-hand side of the map, it says proposed road, what is that? Is that something to do with you, right?
No, that's not mine, you know, I, I use this survey map, you know, when I had my house built, at the delivery, I got this map in my computer.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is accurate and trustable.
All right, so if you want to do the shed, just go into the building department here in town.
Okay.
And show them what you want to do, and they'll guide you along that route.
All right.
All right?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, well, moving on, I guess the last thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December eleventh, twenty-fourth, is it motioned?
Well, I need a copy, so.
Did you see one? You saw that? Well, this is not, this is, uh, just, just tell him here, he has a question for, do we have a, hang on, did somebody, he just wants to ask after the meeting, it's not going to be part of the meeting, he says a question if that's permissible?
As long as it's not about a particular application.
Okay, it's not about an application, right? No, okay, that's fine, just stay there. Did you get the minute?
I don't know.
Okay, well then, let's just hold it over until the next meeting, and do what's done. Anything else for the cause, Mr. Whitney? Mr. Fusco, sir?
I'm fine, just happy new year, everybody.
Happy new year.
Yeah, same.
Flo, anything, Ed?
Happy new year.
Happy new year, all right, Mr. Zendiano?
Make more sense with Terry.
Give a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
All right, so we stand to do, okay, come on up, come on up here, come on.
I represent my friend Yi.
No, we're not representing her, but she's going to ask some questions, go ahead.
Okay, sure. She bought an off-grade solar system, and she installed it on the ground on trailers, and she got a little, Japan seems to say that for ground mount, it must have go to planning board.
Well, then you're going to have to make an application to the planning board.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct, all ground mount.
Yeah, yeah, any, any, any solar facility, ground mount, the only thing that doesn't require a planning board is if it's on a building.
I know. Okay. Sounds good. Okay? Thank you so much.
All right, we got it.